Hello, hello, my check. Hello, hello. Hello, my check. Katturidhe vandhastanam thukusthotram.
May the name of the Lord Jesus Christ glorify.
In the Malay Nairathile, in the Madhyen Nairathile, namelaarmige marputtim mirandhaadu kodathirukkakoodi irukro.
On this afternoon, we have all gathered together for the second session.
Vandhirukkara, namelaarim kattaraasuvadi paraga.
Those who were gathered here, may God bless them all.
Thenalai naminduvaanumaga, vedagamathilundhu oru pakkidi vedasannakale vaasi po.
As we stand, we will take our Bibles and we will read a verse from there.
Velipadthanavisheshiddhalundhanan vaasikiren. Velipadthanavishesham aindha madiyaram.
Book of Revelations, chapter 5.
Vasannakal ondillundhu. Vasannakal ondillundhanan vaasikiren.
From the verses one, I will read.
Andriyam ulum prambum eludappattu, yelum uttrayigalal muttrikeppatturundha, oru bustakathay singaasanathin mail vitturukkuroo deya, valathugaratleekandee. Bustakathithirakkoom, adhin muttrayigale udaykoom, pathravan yarandru muddhansattamittukurugira, balamulla orututhudanayim kandee. Vanathilavathu, bhoomailavathu bhoomin kilaavathu oruvarum andha bustakathithirakkoom, adhay parkoom koodathirundhu. Oruvarum andha bustakathithirundhu vaasikeyum, adhey parkoom, pathranakkaanappuradanall, nan migavum aludheen. Appudhu mooparilil oruvarini ninnoki, nee alavendam. Idho yudakkothradthu singhamum, dawvidin veerumana var, bustakathithirakkoom, adhan yelum uttrayigale udaykoom, jayengundurukkar enran. Amen.
And from verses one, I will read for all of them. And I saw in the right hand of him, who sat on the throne, a scroll written inside and, on the back, sealed with seven seals, then I saw a strong angel, proclaiming with a loud voice, "Who is worthy to open the scroll and to loose its seals?" And no one in heaven nor on the earth or under the earth was able to, open the scroll or to look at it. So I wept much, because no one was found worthy to open and read the scroll, or to look at it, but one of the elders said to me, "Do not weep, behold the line of the, line of the tribe of Judah, the root of David, has prevailed to open the scroll and to loose its seven seals." And I looked and behold, in the midst of the throne, and of the four living creatures, and in the midst of the elders stood a lamb, as though it had been slain, having seven horns and seven eyes, which are the seven spirits of God, sent out to the earth. Then he came down, took the scroll out of the right hand of him, who sat on the throne.
Namthaligali thalti, kattarundha vasannakale aasuruthurupidi aajavusiv.
And we will all bow together and we will ask the God to bless these words.
Engaleneesikile perloka pidave, in the arameanandha madhyen nairathukaanandishulthukro.
Lord, we thank thee for this wonderful afternoon, we request you to bless these words.
In the nairathile, naangalumudhi vaaththile vaasitho.
As of now, we have read your words.
Analathurukuriyartaththi, naangalariyadurulai irukro.
But we don't know the meaning of it.
Idhitodavum gudan engalukku pathramilai.
We have no right, we are not worthy to touch these words.
Sunmai le vedabustakathithududurukke, in the bhoomaila oruvaranam manidhanukum tagadiilai.
And no man in the earth is worthy to touch your Bible.
Anal neero, adavurumudhi ratthams, umudhi ratthaththi sindhi, andharatthaththi engalukkuuduthu, adhenal engali tagadiipaduthi irukirirana.
But Lord, you shed your blood, give your blood to us, and made us worthy to touch over.
Ummudhi thikadrisi, nee rannippeyadharukuriyaviyakyanaththi thandurukirirana.
You sent us a prophet and you sent the revelation with that.
Agave, ippudhu naangaladha arindukalengalal mudiyum.
Now we know and we can understand the revelation.
Yerandhal seydi engalukirukkada.
Because we have the message.
Analathu seydiile marayindurukkada.
But the revelation is hidder inside this scene.
Adhen neerengalukke thalmaya, neeravellipadithithurupidi thalmayudhu jivikiru.
We request you to reveal these words to assembly.
Adavre, naangal tagadiyatrurugal.
We are unworthy, Lord.
Neer tagadiyullavair.
But you are worthy, Lord.
Sirdhaniru besumudhi varthaila, neer mayme paduthom.
As we speak your words, please glorify your words.
Manidharulaki, naangal mayme padavantana, adavre.
Let us, let no man be glorified, Lord.
Neere mayme padiviraga.
Only you be glorified.
Ummudhi varthena, naangal ueythi padikkiru.
Lord, we uphold your words.
Ellathudhi ganamayum, mukkisuruthukro.
All the power, glory, mighty to you.
Yes, Kristvi namathil jivikirain.
The name of Lord Jesus Christ, we pray.
Ningal amarallam.
Amen, please be seated. Brother, konja base kudun, base. Check, check, check.
In the kaali velile, nam arameanorun nairaththi oruvarulai irundho.
In the morning, we had a wonderful time in the word of God.
Namathile, namudhi arameenapastusindai, aurgal prasangam seedhalgal.
Today morning, Pastor Sindai shared the word of God among us.
Nallor arameanoru seydi pressigitha.
We, we heard a wonderful message from him.
Adhenal, nan aasuruthikippattin.
I am, I am blessed through that message.
Yellubirathanal aasuruthikippattin.
How many of you are blessed?
Alleluia. Arputthamana oru alamana oru seydi pressigitha.
And it is a wonderful, meaningful message.
Analathu, abhutu oru alamana oru seydi pressigithu iddu.
But see, after giving such a deep message.
Nan oru saatharno uliyanthanandu solivita.
And he is saying, "I am a simple servant of God."
Nan innum katturukundurukiranandhu than solukirana.
He is saying, "I am still learning."
Analathu, pressigitha prasangaththi parkumbodu.
But when we see the sermon, he, he, message is preached.
Avar, varu, megebriye vedha, vedha bodhagirilile, avarun oruvarumbadi, namelaarum kaanamudindhu.
I can easily say that he is one of the, one of the big Bible scholar.
Praise the Lord, alleluia.
Alleluia.
Parameenapastu Jabrajum gudasunar.
Even Pastor Jabra said.
Kristugulani, anegu uliyakarulirukraragal.
There are lots of servants in Christ.
Anegu thakappanmargalile intushunar.
But there are no fathers in Christ.
Appudhi irukumbo, avarukku oru aramean thakappanmargalikirukkara.
And Pastor Jabra has got a wonderful adopted father today.
Avarukku mattamalai.
Not only for Jabra.
Engirukkara, namelaarukka kettirukkara.
For all of us, we have a father in Pastor Sindai.
Kattaravay aasuvadi paraga.
May God bless him.
Avarukkenan, neentha aisey kuduthu.
May God give him long life.
Manayadangalukki chendru.
And may God make him to go to more places.
Arameenathirukthrisi, in seydi.
This wonderful prophet's message.
Pressigikka kattaruudhishiva.
Let him preach across the globe.
Avaral, anegu thakappanmargalile intushunar.
There are many blessed by his message.
Avarudhi prasangaththi nal, anegu redchikippadurukkara.
By his message, there are a lot of people saved.
Adhubal, inge kudusilaper, ningalirukala.
Even today, there are, there might be people to get saved.
Nanum kudavarudivi seydi nal, aasuruthikippadurukkara.
Even I am also blessed by the message from Pastor Sindai.
Ayrathulaththi embathrundha mandu.
In the year 1982.
Avar thrichi, engaloor thrichi, avar undhar.
He came to teach here, our place.
Appudhu, nan, bina, padanindu vaiidhu puludhu.
I was only fifteen at that time.
Panthavu, paditukundindhu.
I was studying tenth standard.
Appudhu, naangal oru oruthum, Yesveen naamamindhu solukirisabailirundho.
But we were at that time in the, in the doctrine of oneness.
Doctor Stephen Nemburdhan, pastor agarandhar.
Pastor Stephen was the pastor of that day.
Appudhu, thiribundral kuttamirundhu.
Three days convention was there.
Bundral, pastor Sindai besuvada.
All these three days, Pastor Sindai preached.
Appudhu, nan sirupaynaga, ukaradhu seydi kettukundindhu.
I was a very small boy, sitting and listening to those messages.
Appudhu, avargal, andha, Doctor Stephen, onnessabaili.
But that pastor Stephen.
Avar, bundru visyathan, avaraduttilirundhu.
They had only three things with them.
Kattar Yesvee bida.
They said, "Lord Jesus is Father."
Yesveen namathil nyanushtharam.
The name of Lord Jesus Christ baptism.
Anniyabasi besuvada.
And speaking in tongues.
Bundrumattundhu tha, avarukkutthiri, veridundhu riyaadu.
They only know these three things.
Thirgassidhi, seydi thiriyadu.
They don't know the message, prophet.
Thirgassidhi, virupoavargal.
And, and they liked your prophet's message.
Yerkane, yenandral.
Huh? Thirgassidhi chage, they don't like the message of the prophet.
Yerkane, yerkane, vepalasir lari, nemburvandhu, oruvarundhu.
But then there was a man called Polasir Lari.
Kalavudheshigali bodhithu iddhar.
He came and he fell into the doctrine.
Avargal, neenithu iddharagal, thaapattu tha, misenchidharanu.
They thought that Brother Brenham made Polasir Lari to fall.
Tavuru oru, seythudhu oruvar, palu oruvar mel, ulindhu iddhu.
One man made a mistake and another man, another man took the blame.
So, oru thikadseydi virtharagal.
Because of that, they are not happy with our message, prophet's message.
Prophet, Pastor Sindai than, undhathirgassidhi pressigitha rangi.
But on the day 1982, Pastor Sindai came, and he preached prophet message for three days.
Adha, nan mudulmulaakke, thirgassidhi.
That is the first prophet message I heard, when I was fifteen years old.
Praise God, alleluia. Udeni, Pastor Stephen, gurubogovandhu iddu.
And at that time, Pastor Stephen got very angry.
Thirgassidhi, besa kudaadindhu solivita.
He said, "Don't speak about Prophet Brenham."
Anabash, Sindai, nan thirgassidhi, than best vinandusunar.
But Pastor Sindai said, "I will only speak this message."
Adhenal, kutthu thikenselpani iddharagal.
Because of that, they cancelled the meetings.
Udeni, avar, Pastor Sindai, sinridhar, avar bambe.
And immediately, Pastor Sindai went to Mumbai.
Anal, avar mulamala, saguril thichilirundharagal.
But at that time, through him, there were some brothers in church.
Avarli, edurbadha, oru nal, oru tea shopile midpannen.
One day, I met those brothers who know Pastor Sindai.
Avarudhu besumbu sunaragal.
When, when I was speaking to them.
Uggal sabaili, adha, avargal, tha, Brenham message, eepesividharagalindhu, soli, uggasabailani, rannippeyidharalingalindhu sunar.
At that time, no, they were, they were also complaining about, Pastor Stephen sending away Pastor Sindai because of preaching prophet message.
Udeni, naangal sunam, neegal yen, manidhanobudhesti besiririndhu ketto.
Then I asked them, "Why are you talking a man's doctrine?"
Udeni, avar sunan, enneki, saangalamay, oru kuttamirukkada.
Then they told me, "Today evening, we have a meeting."
Vanduparagal, thudmanidhanobudhesma, devanade varthayandhusunaragal.
Why don't you come and check whether this is man's work or God's message?
Udeni, naangal ponnam.
Immediately, we went that in.
Vey seydi ettukundom.
We went and we accepted the message.
Vaan, andrilundhu sabayidhu, veliyavundhu iddu.
From the day we came out of the church.
Andrilundhu, indharay, theseydiile vaalakattaruudhishidhur.
From the day till today, God gave us a grace to live in this message.
Pastor, praise the Lord, alleluia.
Alleluia.
Pastor Sindai, devan anupinadharuka, kattarukinandishulthukre.
I thank God for sending Pastor Sindai today.
Seydi ariyavu, oru nalavai pu, devan kodutha.
And it is happy to know more message.
Kaali seydi, arputthamagathu.
Morning message was wonderful.
Praise the Lord, alleluia.
Alleluia.
Ipiladhu, Pastor James, thakkaanandhu, nandishulthukre.
I want to thank Pastor James.
The arameenakutthile, presenakku, oru vaipu kodutha.
And he has also given me a chance to speak in these meetings.
Yerkane, oru pastor, ingi, muraadi besinar.
There was one more pastor who was speaking before.
Idupol, kutthangalai, kutthu, oru saatharnakariyamal, enduchunna.
It is, it is not easy task to have a, have a get together in meetings like this.
Avarukku mattamalai, enakku kudakadina manorukkariyandha.
Even, it is not only for him, for me, also it's very difficult.
Adhan, thakadina manampani, avar seydirukkara.
But he has done a wonderful work on this difficult time.
Kattaravay aasuvadi paraga.
May God bless Pastor James.
Vandhirukkara, uggalilari, devan aasuvadi paraga.
May God bless, all of you who have come here today.
In the Madhyen Nairathile.
In the afternoon.
Yaravudhi, ingi, thunginal.
If somebody is sleeping.
Nan, uggal, kurayesolamattin.
I will not say anything against it.
Ennal, saapitupur, ellarukku, thukkantana.
Because after eating, everyone will have sleep.
Nan saapit, nan uggan, enakku kudathukkantana.
Even after I eat, I will also get sleep.
Naangal, nindukundurupadhal, oruvaru thukkaramalirukala.
Maybe because we are standing, we may not get sleep.
Irundhalum.
Anyhow.
Idhavaipu, ibudiyadhu nairathile seydi, nan besithan, agavindu.
Anyhow, I have to speak the message now.
Ningal, getthu tha, agavindu.
And it is, you have to listen to that message.
Aindharay, yerkare, oru aindharimani, aindheyal, aindharimani, orikim, Pastor James, nairathikunakkuuduthurukkara.
Up to 5:30 PM, he has given me the time.
Agave, amen, alleluia, praise the Lord, solukuravargal, nalathattama soluk.
So, anyone want to say, "Amen, alleluia," and all, you give more sound.
Appudhu, thundurukkal, mulichikaga.
Then only those who are sleeping, they will also get awake.
Kattarukkala aasuriparaga.
May God bless.
In the endri, seydi, Tamilile, angilathile, pastor Jabraj, mulibirukrar.
Pastor Jabraj is translating my message in English.
Nan, the, basicukundarukumbo.
As I, I, I am going to speak.
Sirdhaniru, unachiosaputti, nanai angilathile besivudhu.
Sometimes in emotions, I'll start speaking in English.
Oru unachiosathile.
On emotions.
Neerakku, angilam mulidha, besathiriyadu.
I don't know to speak English fully.
Veru, pathavu, budhan, paditukirin.
I am only tenth standard.
Butler English than besivanan.
I will only speak Butler English.
Idhavu, enurunachiosathile, appudhi besivudhu.
But in emotions, I'll start speaking in English.
Avay, ningal, porudukal, ubrikadukul.
You have to, you have to suffer with that.
Oruvaru, nan, appudhi, angilam besinall.
If I am speaking English.
Brother, Tamilile solukal.
Brother Jabraj, we translate in Tamil.
Nan, Tamilile solukbo.
When I speak in Tamil.
Ningal, angilathile soluk.
I will speak in English.
Kattaravay aasuvadi paraga.
May God bless us all.
In the arameenandha malayin, in the Madhyen Nairathile.
In this wonderful afternoon.
Nan, ingi, seydi, besad, Pastor James, sunabodhu.
When Pastor James told me to speak.
Enne seydi besalam, neenidhin.
I was thinking on what to speak.
Kujav, kaaliile, pastor besinadhu, kujav, oru, oru, varietyaga, not, vidyasamala, varietyaga, kujav, maatramaga, besalam, neenidhin, bagayaga.
I, I thought morning, as, as the pastors spoke, I also want to speak on a, not a different one, but on a different dimension.
Idhavu, vagai, variety, vidyasamala.
It is one of the varieties actually.
Udeni, oru, matan, noithurukkarama.
There, there, there is one kind of meat only.
The matan, le, namu, idhu, soupu, selaa.
One will do, one will make a mutton soup.
Alag, gravy, selaa.
One will make mutton gravy.
Fry him, banla.
One will make mutton chukka.
Obandru, oru vagai.
All are different varieties.
Anal, oru, matantha.
End of the day, only one meat.
Adhubal, oru seyditha.
One message only.
Kaaliile, pastor besinar.
In the morning, Pastor spoke.
Bible ilundhu, thirgassidhi ilundhu besinar.
He spoke from Bible and the message of the prophet.
Adhubal, nanum kudengirundhan, besupugirai.
Even I am also going to speak from Bible and message.
Kattaravay aasuruthu.
May God bless all of us.
Namakseydi thirundharuvarag.
May God open the message for us.
Namelaarum, adhi, seydi ettukundu.
We will accept the message.
Adhalin, namu, nadabbo.
We will walk in the message.
Naan besuvada, edha, thavurukalirundhal.
If there is any mistake in this.
Adhen, neegal, veduthu, veduthu, eduthudungal.
Just leave that message.
Adhe ettukulavendam.
Leave that, that part of the message.
Sariyagirundhal, adhe ettukulavala.
If it is rightful.
Right, kattaravay aasuvadi paraga.
You have to accept it.
Idhika, andha, maara, maali nairathile.
In this afternoon.
Nan besu, virburu, seydiindhu thalipu.
Whatever I want to speak on the title.
Yelum uttray.
Seven seals.
Thirgadrisi, pressigithu, ellaseydiilum, sirundaseydi.
Seven seals message is the best message among the sermons preached by Brother Brenham.
Abhuttha, namudhi thirgadasin, solukkara, seydiile.
That is what Brother Brenham is also saying.
Adhenal, avar pressigitha, mathaseydi, allam, mugiyamalai, enrathamalai.
Because of that, the other message is not inferior.
Ellamay mugiyamtha.
All messages are superior only.
Analathu, thalai vaituthu, buladhu, thalai kelle, vaituthu, buladhu.
But, but like keeping the capstone.
Yelum uttray seydi irukkada.
Seven seals message is there.
Biblele, ellamay sirundhu bustakathiltha.
In Bible, all the books are all special books only.
Anal, oru silbuustakathil, mugithum, vaidhavai, irukkada.
But among these books, some, some books are very special.
Velipadthanavishesham, megebriye mugiyamana, thakkaanirukkada.
Revelations book is very, very important.
Adhaka, madhyemarku, luca, mugiyamalai, thakselamudiyadu.
Because of that, four gospels are not important, I am saying.
Adhipolatha.
Likewise.
Namudhi, adavre, Yes, Kristvi, thudbhoomil, vaalndhu boodhu.
When, when Lord Jesus Christ lived in this earth.
Avar, arputtharagalangaliseytha.
He done lot of miracles and wonders.
Avar, uru, rageshigali, rageshigali, arayindhu sunar.
He has also found the secrets of the art of people.
Varthay, avar pressigitha.
He preached the word.
Avar, arambothilundhu, kadesi, oru, avarudhi ulithile.
From the beginning to the end of his ministry.
Oru visyaththi, mattume, bukyathu, padithukundey, undha.
But he was focusing on only one thing.
Andhur, mugiyamana, visyam, enna?
What is that important thing?
Avar, arambakalathilundhu.
From the beginning.
Avar, siluvel, avar, arayapudhali, maraimugamaga, solikundey, undha.
Till the day of Calvary, he was indicating it.
Oruvaru, nee, kesiashalkalu, matturukal, brindukundharu, illiyad, thiriyad, illai.
We don't know whether the disciples and the people understood it.
Anal, Yes, Kristvi, thad, siluvel, arayapudhali, arambakalathilundhu, solikundey, tharun, undha.
From the day, one of his ministry till the Calvary, Lord Jesus was kept impressing on that same word.
Kadesi, idhu, mulumayaka, nirayavikindhu.
But on the end, the word got fulfilled.
Adhipol, namudhi thikadrisiyum.
Likewise, a prophet.
Avarudhi, arambakala, ulithilundhu.
From the, from the beginning of his ministry.
Avarudhi, ulithin, mudi, orai.
Till the end of his ministry.
Evan, maraimugamagavu, neeradiyavu.
God either directly or indirectly.
Avarukku, avar, yelum uttray seydi, guruthu, arivithukundetan, undha.
To him, God has revealed this seven seals message.
Avarum, kudada, ariyamal, sabail, pressigithukundan, undha.
He don't understanding, he kept on preaching it.
Eedha, oru, irukkada, mattum, thirindirundharav.
But he understood there is something there.
Kadesiile.
In.
Yelum uttray, pressigitha, prajudhaan.
When the seven seals were preached.
Idhithan, devani, olokalamaga, velipaditharabadi, arivithukundha.
And he was saying, "This is what God was trying to speak all these ages."
Adhubal, silakariyagali, thamangisulavirburu.
Likewise, I want to tell something.
Udlavu, nambarbo, kunjas.
First of all. Scroll. Again. Scroll, scroll. Okay, idukma, idukki, next, next. Yes. In the message, sir, is this the time?
Idhuva, ayinme, ridhuva, samyamindhu seydiile.
Para number eighty-seven.
Pathi, enthatyalile.
Prophet says.
Thirgadasi, solukkara.
Now along the road.
Se, parinna, andha, paadiin, paadiyol, engalum.
And when I was a little boy.
Nan, oru sirupayana, irundhobodu.
My longing was.
Ennu, urudhathin, manjeyanadhi.
I was dissatisfied.
Nan, nan, migavum, orthapattirundhu.
In the country I lived in.
Nan, vaandha, desaththi, gurithu, nan, migavum, sandoshamattirundhu.
I long somehow.
Nan, urudhathil, adhimay, vaanjithu, idhennavindhu.
To go west.
Nan, merkuthokke, chellan, nan, vaanjithen.
So, Prophet Branham, when he was a young boy.
Agave, thirgadasi, sirupayana, irundhobodu.
He wanted to go to the west.
Avar, merkupadhi, inoki, chellavindhu, mantravanjitha.
His desire was, he went to, he want to go to west.
Avar, merkuthisai, inoki, nagaravindhu, mantravanjitha.
But he don't know that, why he decided to go to west?
Avar, edharka, merkuthisai, keepavavindhu, mantravindhu, avar, avarukke, thiriyavillai.
But, but he was longing there, he longing that.
Avar, urudhathukul, oru, vaanjthirunchi, nan, merkuthisai, keepavavindhu.
And when I come from under that anesthetistic.
Nan, mayakkinilai, lendhu, veliyavandhobodu.
I thought I was standing out on the western prairies.
Nan, merkuthisai, illa, kaattu, murpudargal, naduvala, nirpudalpo, nan, unundhu.
And a great golden cross.
Anga, vaanathile, oru, enna, siruponnalana, oru siluvel.
A golden cross in the sky.
Anga, vaanathile, oru, ponnalana, siluvel, idundhu.
And the glory of God shining down of, of it.
Andha, ponnalana, siluvel, idundhu, deva, maginayana, pradavasthuthukundarundhu.
So, don't. So, Prophet saw a vision in his young, young age.
Avarudhi, sirupayidhile, thirgadasi, oru, darshinaththi, parkira.
Picture, picture. Yes, he, in the sky, in the, in the vision, he saw the sky.
He was standing in the west. The golden cross was in the sky. At the time he was not a preacher. He was a young boy. But God revealed the secret. The golden cross was hanging in the, uh, sky in the west. He don't know that what is that cross. After revealing the seals. He knew that. This cloud is the golden cross. This cloud was came into the west. So, this is the shining golden cross. Because Prophet says. This is the second crucifixion. So, the wooden cross is the first crucifixion. His golden cross is the second crucifixion. And also Prophet says that. The light comes from, shining from his face. In the message, uh, what is that, uh, this is the rising of the sun. In the message Prophet says that. In the cloud. We can see the, uh, the hair of Jesus as white. We can see his beard. We can see his two eyes. And also nose. Also mouth. We can see Jesus' face in this cloud. A light coming from his eyes. In, in this picture we cannot see, Life Magazine picture. But in the Science Magazine picture, black and white picture. We can see light comes from this side. Before Prophet do the ministry. Prophet indirectly says, reveals him. There is something will be happen in the west side. Hallelujah, praise God. Then also, let us go. Yes, another message is at the same message, sir, this is the time. Prophet says. As in that vision. Many years ago. Where that, where that big curtain laid in the west. Very, very big curtain hanging in the sky. In the west side. And a mountain of the bread of life. The little book. I, he, he quoted this in the, in the message, I, I was not desupposed into the heavenly visions. So, in this vision also Prophet says the big curtain laid in the west. First he says a golden cross in the west. Now he says. A great curtain hanging in the west side. The mountain of the bread of life was there. What is that? It's also, eh, equals to this cloud comes in the west. This is the great curtain hanging in the west. This is the mountain of the bread of life. From that break can get the food in this mountain, hallelujah. Next, let's go. And then, and then next, after he come to the ministry. These two visions before he comes to ministry. When he was preaching. Before opening of the seventh seal, seven years before opening of the seventh seals. In the message, why people touched about. Another name for this book is Inner Vale. In the book. Prophet said about the vision, the tenth vision. At the time you don't know that what is the tenth vision. But, I, in the seventh seal. Prophet said. Do you know that, I, when I preached in the, in the book, Inner Vale, I said the tenth vision about the tenth vision. Now he said, now it is fulfilled in the seventh seal. Prophet says the tenth vision is the seventh seal. Hallelujah, amen, praise God. Then he says in the message about the seventh seal, seven seals. After that. In the year nineteen sixty-two. December month. He preached the important message. Sir, is this the time. In the message he sa- he says. Some days before. When I was in my room, sitting, when I was standing in my room. Approximately about ten o'clock, ten AM. It may be ten AM. I saw a vision, he said. In that vision. Seven angels. Lifted me up. This is the big, this is the imaginary picture, not true picture, but like this. Seven, when the seven angels came in the cloud. Prophet said, I was standing there. This is not true, but this is the vision. Amen, praise God. In that vision, the angels having two wings on their, in their heads, in their heads. Some people says this is the cherubimhs. Cherubimhs has six wings in the Bible. But this angel has only two wings. Some people says this is the angels. But we don't know that there, they, suppose the angels has wings in the Bible. But Prophet says this is the seven angels. He says the seventh angel attracted me. That's, that means, that's why we believe that, that's why we believe that. Branham is the seventh angel. After that, after the December, nineteen sixty-two, December. After he see this vision. He was confused. Because. He thought, he thought he may be die. Suppose the angels will come and took me to heaven. Like the fire charred came and took Elija. And also he read about his son Joseph. Because he was a small boy. If he died, who will take care of him? So he was in the trance stage. Many days went to be, because he cannot be in peace. So, he took the Bible one day. And said unto God, unto the Lord. Lord, if you will give me the, if you will not give me the answer to these visions. I will not return to home. I will always stay in the forest. Then he went into, into the forest. And he raised his hands. And he prayed. When he was praying. Suddenly something stuck in his hands. Suddenly something stuck in his hand. A sword fa- fa- fell in his hand. He was feared, hallelujah. Because he never saw such kind of a sword in his life. That was the prettiest sword. In that sword there was the bill, bills was there. He said the precious sword, sir, bill. He never saw such kind of bills, never, never before in his life. This thing happened in the year nineteen, nineteen sixty-three, January. A sound came from heaven. This is the king's sword. Not a king's sword. The only one, the king of kings is our Lord Jesus Christ. That king, the king of kings sword is placed in the hand of our prophet. Through that sword Prophet fight with Satan, Satan. But our prophet, precious prophet passed away. After that. Where is this sword now? Hallelujah, praise God. It went to heaven. No, 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 it is here, hallelujah. Praise God, hallelujah. That sword is placed in the hands of the bride of Christ. Because, because, because in the message of seventh seal. In the, at last, when he prayed. Prophet prayed. Oh Lord. My days is finishing. I want to hand over this sword to the faithful person, hallelujah. Who is that faithful person, that Prophet wanted to give the hand over the sword. I think there is the bride of Christ. That sword is in the hands of you and me, hallelujah. Hallelujah, praise God. With that sword, we, we should fight with Satan and the denominational doctrines, hallelujah. And also fight with the freshly lights, lusts come unto us. Hallelujah, praise God. Prophet says, in the seventh, seventh seals message, breach. That seventh seals book was in the hand of, uh, to him, in the, which is in the throne. The book was in the hand of him that sat in the throne, it is in the right hand of him. The lamb came and took the book. Then Prophet says. The lamb gave the book to the seventh angel. Hallelujah, praise God. The seventh angel gave that book to John, he says. Prophet says John is type two bride, hallelujah. The book is the word. The word is the sword. Sword, sword. Yes, W O R D sword. If you took one letter S. W O R D word. So the sword is the word. God gave the book, the word to the Prophet. God gave the sword to the Prophet. After he just finished, Prophet hand over the sword to the bride of Christ. Now the sword is in the other hands. Praise the Lord, hallelujah. What John ha- deals with that book after he got? After he got that book, got that book, he ate that. After he ate, what will happen? If somebody will come and give the apple to us. We got that apple, we get that apple. After we get that apple, what we will do? We will eat that apple. Then, then after that, where will be that apple? It will be in our belly. If that person will come and ask me, give me this apple. Can we cut our belly and they take and can we give it? We cannot give. There will be no apple in our belly. It will digest. It will mingle with our blood and our bone, our flesh. So, John gets the seventh seals book in his hands. He will not remain, still, he will not have the book in his hands. He ate that, hallelujah. After he ate that, what will happen? The book and he will be one, hallelujah. Hallelujah, praise God, glory, praise God. Hallelujah. So, after January, uh, January. After he saw this vision. February twenty-eight, March nineteen sixty-three, February twenty-eight. He went to Sunset Mountain. In the sunset mountain. Seven angels from eternity. Within fraction of the second. They came and took Prophet. And revealed that seven seals to him. Then he returned to, went to heaven. At the time, the, the Life Magazine photographed that picture. This is the picture photographed by the Life Magazine. They gave the name to this article. The supernatural mystery cloud. This cloud is supernatural. Because, because up to twenty-six miles only the humidity in the earth. Humidity, clouds will be only in twenty-six miles. So there will be no clouds. So scientist confused. How this cloud comes upon the limit of the cloud? So they said this is not natural, but this is a supernatural. In the Exodus of the children of Israel in Egypt. The pillar of fire and the pillar of cloud appeared there. The pillar, pillar of fire appeared in the night. Pillar of cloud appeared in the morning time. What is the meaning of that? The pillar of fire seen in the head of our Prophet. Is the last messenger to the last church changer. In the first church change. The pillar of fire met Paul in the state of Damascus. Same pillar of fire. Same pillar of fire appeared to Moses in the burning bush. The pillar of fire said, I am God Jehovah. The same pillar of fire changed his name and told to Paul. I am the Jesus thou persecutor. The same pillar of fire came to Prophet. And said. So the first messenger and the last messenger. First church change and the last church change. So throughout all the, in all the churches. Pillar of fire appeared. That means the night time, there is night time. Now the pillar of cloud appeared after the sun. That means this is the, now bride is coming in the morning time. That's why Prophet preached, this is the rising of the sun. That's why Prophet preached, this is the shalom, hallelujah. When the people, when the Hebrews will say shalom. When they meet in the morning. They will say shalom. Shalom means good morning. When we say shalom, it is the morning time. In the message, shalom Prophet says. This, what this cloud says. It says shalom to the bride of Christ. Praise the Lord, hallelujah. So now the pillar of cloud appears. Pillar of fire came upon the head of Prophet. Prophet gives the explanation to that. Never in the world, never in the world, nobody photographed of God. This is the first photography of God. But the Ro- but the Roman Catholic, Roman Catholic people. They drew the circle upon the head of Antony, Sebastian, every, every saints. This is not real, this is drawing. But the pillar of fire came upon the head of the Prophet is real. Photography never will say lie. So what is the meaning of that? Prophet said. God want to take the photograph with your man. God want to take the photograph with the Prophet. There is the pillar of fire. But this is the pillar of cloud. The pillar of fire and the pillar of is not different, but the same thing. In the night it called the pillar of fire, in the day it called the pillar of. Pillar of fire, God want to take the photograph with your man. Praise God. But the pillar of cloud. God want to take not with a single man. He want to take photograph with your people, group. Prophet said the seven angels in this cloud, hallelujah. God want to take the photograph with a group of people. Hallelujah, praise God. Hallelujah, praise God. After opening the seven seals. After someone swind, after someone swind. One brother showed this Life Magazine picture to Prophet Branham. Brother Branham, what is the meaning of this picture, he asked him. I don't know brother. And also when he go to house. He asked that man. He asked that man. He asked that man. I want to take this book with me to my house. I want to take this book with me to my house. And he took the book to his house. He was in the world. When he see these books in this hand and standing in his room. He was in the world. He was looking at the children of the earth. Behind him. He was looking. Some sounds said. He heard something. Do you know what is this? He was asking. He was asking. Immediately he turned and saw. He saw. Nobody was there. Who was there? Then he sees the book. He was looking. Again, the sound comes. He was looking. Do you want to know what is this? He was asking. He said, oh God. He was asking. I want to see this. He was asking. Then God said. Then God said. Turn this picture and see. He was looking. He was looking. He turned right to right side and see this picture. He was looking. When he turned the book, picture and see this. He was looking. He perfectly saw the face of Lord Jesus Christ. He was looking. He turned the picture and see. He was looking. Straight away, if we see this, we cannot know. He was looking. If we turn this picture, only we know the revelation, what is? He was looking. He was looking. What is the meaning of that? What is the meaning of that? Prophet said in the message, in the message, shalom. He is saying. In the symphony music, in the symphony music. It is a beautiful magic. When they are playing the music. It is a beautiful magic. Suddenly will be the change of the music. It is a beautiful magic. The scale major from minor will, from major scale. It is a beautiful magic. All people cannot know this. It is a beautiful magic. Only those who knew the music, only knew this. It is a beautiful magic. Change of music. It is a beautiful magic. So, that means change of music, you turn the picture and see. It is a beautiful magic. It is a beautiful magic. Turn the picture. It is a beautiful magic. If we turn the switch, then only the light will come. It is a beautiful magic. If we switch on and turn the switch, then only we get the light. We will see. Seven seals are easy, seven seals is the dog ages. It is a beautiful magic. In the seven seals. It is a beautiful magic. In the Lourdes Church, also the blackness is there. It is a beautiful magic. In the seven seals picture, prophet drew the seven eclipse of the moon. It is a beautiful magic. It is a beautiful magic. Can you say, say, can you show me any church has without black? It is a beautiful magic. No church, no church. It is a beautiful magic. All churches has blackness. It is a beautiful magic. That means all churches has sin. It is a beautiful magic. All churches has mistakes. It is a beautiful magic. God denounces the seven churches, he condemns. It is a beautiful magic. Yes, seven churches. It is a beautiful magic. In first church, he says, you have no the first, you do not have the first law. He was looking. He was looking. One church, he say, you are in the place Saturn City is there. He was looking. He was looking. The our judge with that we are living in the Lourdesia. We are living in the Lourdesia. There is the worst church among all the churches. It is a beautiful magic. God says you are naked. You are miserable. You are blind. You are blind. So, all churches is mistakes, has mistakes. It is a beautiful magic. All churches has blackness. It is a beautiful magic. But when he open the seven seals. It is a beautiful magic. Headstone comes. It is a beautiful magic. This, this, this is the headstone of Jesus Christ, hallelujah. It is a beautiful magic. This is the head of Jesus Christ. It is a beautiful magic. In this head, there is no blackness, full white, hallelujah. It is a beautiful magic. Full white, hallelujah. It is a beautiful magic. Now, God, God denounces the churches. The God is a beautiful magic. But he, Lord, he praises the bride of Christ. He is a beautiful magic. Pick up, hallelujah, praise God. Pick up your pen and write pages. You are taking the paper. In that, God says. The God says. The entire bride will be. It is a beautiful magic. Will come to very close to the headstone. It is a beautiful magic. He will be like Christ, hallelujah, he will be like Christ. He will be like Christ. When Jesus was in the earth. He was in the earth. He left, he left many things to fulfill. He was taking the children of the earth. But at the second coming. He was taking the children of the earth. He will fulfill this. He was taking the children of the earth. Through his bride. He was taking the children of the earth. Hallelujah, praise God. He was taking the children of the earth. Hallelujah. So, pick up your pen and write in this passage, God praises the bride. You are taking the paper. The God is a beautiful magic. He condemns the churches. He is a beautiful magic. But he praises the bride. He is a beautiful magic. Praise the Lord, hallelujah, praise God, next. Next. In May, nineteen sixty-four, after you opened the seven seals. In nineteen sixty-four. In the same Sunset Mountain. It is a beautiful magic. When prophet went there. It is a beautiful magic. It is a beautiful magic. God came in the whirlwind. The God was in the wind. And he said about the judgment. He was saying. Judgment will come to Alaska, he said. He was saying. The whirlwind struck the bush. He was looking. He was looking. It struck the rocks. He was looking. That rock blasted into pieces. It was a broken rock. Prophet said in the message, what is the attraction on the mountain? It is a beautiful magic. Every piece of the rock blasted is. It is a beautiful magic. Every piece is like the headstone. It is a beautiful magic. Every piece is like the tree, triangle, square. It is a beautiful magic. He said in the message, same message. He was saying. Scroll, scroll, yes. And par number, what is the attraction on the mountain, par number one forty-five? And every one of them. It is a beautiful magic. Every one rock. It is a beautiful magic. Has three corners on it. It is a beautiful magic. That it tore off, hallelujah. It is a beautiful magic. How can all the stones will blast like the triangle? It is a beautiful magic. It is a beautiful magic. See, in our, in our country, no, we, we have this stone quarries. It is a beautiful magic. Not all stones get blasted in a triangle. It is a beautiful magic. Every, every stone, it gets blasted in irregular shape. This is supernatural, hallelujah. It is a beautiful magic. That means. It is a beautiful magic. The way the rocks blasted into a triangle shape, triangle shape. It is a beautiful magic. Nature types the spiritual. It is a beautiful magic. Nature is the first Bible. It is a beautiful magic. Hallelujah, praise God. Hallelujah. That means the headstone came, hallelujah. It is a beautiful magic. Headstone, Jesus came. He was a beautiful magic. When he opened the seven seals. He was taking the children of the earth. Hallelujah, praise God, praise God. Now, prophet says, in the message token. He is saying. Seven seals is the greatest message. It is a beautiful magic. Now, par number twenty-eight. It is a beautiful magic. Now, this morning I told you. I told you. Being not with you. I think we had another two or three hours message this morning. It is a beautiful magic. But. But. But it was just too tremendous. It is a beautiful magic. I don't know whether the people got it or not. The people did not understand it. I hope they do. I hope they do. Everywhere and I hope there was some good tapes on it. I hope there was some good tapes on it. So, it can be carried out. We will take it. To be known. To be known. To be known that I believe. I believe. With all the message that I ever brought. I will take it. That absolutely was ordered of God. It is a beautiful magic. Outside of the course, the regular commission like the seven seals and things. It is a beautiful magic. He said, prophet said. He is saying. Token message is the very good tremendous message. It is a beautiful magic. Except seven seals. It is a beautiful magic. That means what is the greatest message? It is a beautiful magic. The seven seals is the greatest. It is a beautiful magic. Hallelujah, praise God. Hallelujah. Amen, praise God, next. And now, another message. And also prophet said, seven seals, in the seven seals book, the whole Bible open. He is saying. It is a beautiful magic. Do you believe that? It is a beautiful magic. Hallelujah, praise God. In the books souls that are in prison now. It is a beautiful magic. Par number one forty-one. It is a beautiful magic. The mysteries was in the seven seals. It is a beautiful magic. When these seven seals was open. It is a beautiful magic. That opened up the entire Bible. It is a beautiful magic. Hallelujah, praise God. Hallelujah, praise God. That's why we say seven seals is the greatest message. It is a beautiful magic. It is a beautiful magic. Seven seals opened the entire Bible. It is a beautiful magic. God opened the entire Bible through the prophet. It is a beautiful magic. We no need another person. We don't need another person. Like me, like you, like other person. I am like you. Because it is already open. It is a beautiful magic. Just before in the morning, one brother said in the testimony. It is a beautiful magic. We just passing the message. We are not coming to breach the message. We are not coming to breach the message. Because it is already open, entire Bible opened by prophet. It is a beautiful magic. Hallelujah, praise God. Hallelujah, praise God. So, hereafter, after the seven seals. It is a beautiful magic. No mystery, no mystery waiting to open. It is a beautiful magic. Everything is open. It is a beautiful magic. If all things is open. It is a beautiful magic. Then what about the seven trumpets? It is a beautiful magic. It is a beautiful magic. Some peoples came to prophet. Some people came to prophet. Brother Branham, he preached seven seals. Brother, you are taking the children of the earth. When we will preach about the seven trumpets and seven vials. You are taking the children of the earth. Immediately prophet went and to God. He was taking the children of the earth. God, people are asking me to preach seven trumpets and seven vials. All the people who are taking the children of the earth. They are ready to book the AC hall for that message. They are ready to give money for all arrangements. They are ready to give money for all arrangements. When I should bridge the lot, you tell. You tell. Then God said unto him. The God said to him. No need to bridge that. You already spoke that in the sixth seal, sixth seal. You are taking the children of the earth. Hallelujah, praise God. All thing is open. It is a beautiful magic. Hallelujah, praise God, glory. It is a beautiful magic. Amen, next. Seven seal is the end of the New Testament. Seven seals is the end of the New Testament. It is a beautiful magic. Yes, amen, praise God. What is the title, message, title of the message? He that in you, message. You are taking the children of the earth. In that message, prophet says. He is saying. So, this, this, the message of the seven seals. It is a beautiful magic. That's the message of the entire Bible. It is a beautiful magic. The seven seals closes the New Testament. It is a beautiful magic. And sealed it up, hallelujah. It is a beautiful magic. So, seven seals finish the New Testament. It is a beautiful magic. Then what was finished the Old Testament? It is a beautiful magic. In the cross, Jesus said. He is saying. All is done, hallelujah. It is a beautiful magic. Hallelujah, all is done.
And preach to the people.
All the children of God.
Eat my flesh and drink my blood.
My mother and brother are all dead.
All the people scattered and ran away from him.
They said. He is the cannibal. So they don't accept him. So that's the new revelation. To the Jews.
But it is coincided with the word of God.
But he was born.
Hallelujah, praise God. So Jesus said. All the people expected Jehovah in the Old Testament.
All the people expected Jehovah.
But Jesus came. They expected Jehovah. They expected from the corridor, from the ladder, from heaven to earth.
They expected he will straight away come to the temple. But he came humbly from the Bethlehem. But he came in the stable stock, hallelujah, praise God.
So today the Christians are expecting Jesus.
Today the Christians expect Jesus.
He comes as their expectation.
But he came in the N M R fee. Hallelujah.
In the bride form he came, comes.
He came to the church.
In the morning, he drew the drawing.
He drew the drawing.
About the wheat plant, parable, wheat plant.
They saw only one seed.
But came, but came.
The seed came, leaves came. After that, the seeds came. And the husk came, and the husk came. After that, there was a lot of seeds.
After that, not one seed will come.
Only one seed came.
A bunch of seed will come.
But a whole group of seeds came.
Hallelujah, praise God.
Hallelujah.
Single seed becomes the bunch.
Only one seed becomes the wheat corn. They saw only one seed.
But Jesus came.
The Jews saw Jehovah.
Gentiles expected Jesus.
The Jews expected Jesus.
But Jesus in the form of bride comes.
He came to the church.
The corn will come in the top of the wheat plant.
They saw.
The corn will come in the top of the wheat plant.
They saw the seed.
It will not come in the bottom. The fruit of the tree will come in the top of the.
The fruit of the tree will come in the top of the.
This cloud comes the top of the sky.
This is the wheat corn.
This is the fruit comes in the tree of the bride tree.
This is the headstone.
This is the headstone. Hallelujah, praise God. Seven seals is equal to walking with God.
There are seven angels.
See, a cluster of angels come from the heavens.
A group of angels came to the church.
Shake the whole earth.
Just stand there.
And the newspaper write it.
When was predicted months and months before. This is the time before.
There he stood there.
And said, the time is at hand. He said, this is the time.
Return back. Open the seven seals of mysteries.
That is, tell us about the secret.
That's been hid all through the reformers and things, bring it out.
All the secret of the church.
Then comes preaching serpent seed.
Then the serpent seed.
And all these things like that.
What does the clergy do? Instead of saying, why Luther said, these are such. They said, Luther said this, Luther said that.
They'll never see it.
But what a privilege it is.
For us. Who believe. To walk in the presence of God every day.
In God's presence.
When we're believing the seven seals and the serpent seals.
When we're believing the seven seals and the serpent seals.
And meditating and preaching and hearing.
It is walking in the presence of God.
Like Elijah, he did.
How Elijah, how he did.
If you want to walk with God.
Do you want to walk with God?
Read, read seven seals and serpent seeds.
Read the seven seals and serpent seeds.
Speak about that. You will walk with God.
Not physically like he did. Spiritually, in your heart, in your mind. You will walk with God, hallelujah, praise God.
You will walk with God.
Why do you say this is the message?
Next. Prophet said.
To read the message book, sir, is this the time? How many people read the message?
Para number six.
The message, the breach between seven churches and seals. How many in here has read, what time is it, sir?
How many people read the message? I wish some way, if you could get to hear it or some way.
How many people read the message?
Prophet suggests us to read that book.
Let me read the message.
What is in that book, why he suggests us to read in that book?
What is in that book?
In that book, nothing but the dreams and the visions.
What is the secret in that book?
If there is no secret in the book.
There is no secret in the book.
Can he suggest us to preach, to read that?
So there is, will prophet lie? No, no, he will not lie.
Because. In that book, full of visions and dreams.
There are only dreams and visions.
But finally, at last, he comes to the conclusion.
He says.
Seven angels came and meet me.
There were seven angels.
That is the secret about that, hallelujah.
That is the secret about that, hallelujah.
Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Prophet says. And another place in the message.
I will speak a new title.
I will never spoke about that.
I will never spoke about that.
Sir sees, this is a sign of the end message.
How many people read the message?
But I am approaching something tonight that I never did before.
I have never done something before.
And there is something that I am going to speak on.
I have never thought of speaking on such a thing.
So prophet said about the message, sir, is this the time?
How many people read the message?
There is a new thing that I never approached it.
I have never done something before.
What is the new thing?
What is the new thing?
Go to the west.
Go to the west. Where?
About the seven angels. So tells about the visitation of the seven angels.
That is the worship of the seven angels.
I am going to, within some minutes, I will finish that. In one message, prophet says.
In the prayer.
Before he start the message.
He pray, praise in the message.
In the beginning of the message.
He says.
God give us great message this morning.
He gives a great message.
What is that message? Christ is the mystery of God revealed.
That message is also important like the seven seals. That message is also important like the seven seals.
That message is also important like the seven seals.
That message is also important like the seven seals.
Prophet begins the seven seals in seven seals book.
How many people read the message?
And finishes it in the book of Christ is the mystery of God revealed.
That is, the message is revealed.
Hallelujah, praise God. Amen, praise God. In that message. He says. Para number one, and the four hundred and fourteen.
I hope.
Every man.
That hears this tape.
Every woman. Will understand that. Christ is the mystery of God revealed message.
That is, the message is revealed.
From this, prophet knows that.
How do you know?
Man or woman hears this message.
The woman or the man who hears this.
Cannot understand this.
None of them.
Not them only. You also, myself also.
We cannot hear the things of God. We cannot hear the things of God.
But. If he wills.
He will reveal to us, hallelujah.
Because the Bible says. He will hid the things to the prudent and the wise man.
And he will reveal it to the babies, hallelujah.
Hallelujah, praise God. God can reveal the thing to the farmers. God can reveal the things to the farmers in the fields.
He can reveal the things to the dobes, to the dragon people.
If he will be the predestinated seed.
How many people read the message?
Hallelujah, praise God. If he will be the humble, humble people.
Ready to land, hallelujah.
God will reveal this, hallelujah. Hallelujah. And also, in the same message, he says.
Para number six thirty.
Oh, since, since a hard message like this. I think we just ought to worship him a little bit in the spirit.
Hallelujah, praise God.
Prophet said, Christ is the mystery of God, message is very hard message.
That is, the message is very hard message.
Why he says like that? Because there is the reason. Because in that message.
Second pull finished. That pull begins.
Why he says like that, hallelujah?
He says.
But if you, but if you will turn and look at the clock.
Do you see the clock?
It is on the dot.
That is, the second pull is at hand, hallelujah.
The third pull is at hand, hallelujah. So, in the message, Christ is the mystery of God revealed.
The second, second pull ends. That is, the message is revealed.
The third pull begins.
Also, he says.
Second pull, scroll down. Second pull has been made manifested.
That is, the message is revealed.
Then we go. In that message.
After he finishes the service.
He sang the song. Take the name of Jesus with you.
First, he is singing the song in low pitch.
After he said, the second pull is finished, the third pull is at hand, after he said that.
The second pull is finished, the third pull is at hand, after he said that.
Immediately, he sang that song. In high octave.
He sang that song in the eighth note.
Hallelujah, praise God. After he sang that song.
He said.
Do you know that Holy Spirit sang that song?
He said, I sang that song.
Holy Spirit sang that song.
In the eighth octave.
Not the seventh octave. Not the seventh octave.
Not the seventh octave.
Seven churches. After the seven churches. The headstone comes, hallelujah. This is the eighth octave, hallelujah.
This is the eighth octave.
The seven churches is the churches.
But the headstone is the bride age. But the headstone is the bride age.
Hallelujah, praise God. He that knew message title.
Para number four.
And then about the message this morning. Now I want to, everyone to thoroughly understand.
Do you want to understand?
And for the last five years. Since I come of the field.
There has been a burden hanging in my heart.
And it's very strange that. This would be lifted just at the time this message come forth.
After the message came.
Of this morning.
The burden of the church.
That was the morning message.
Evening message. In the morning.
Souls that are in the prison.
He told about that message, souls that are in the prison. The church. The church.
That was the morning message.
Evening message. In the morning.
What prophet preached?
About the third pull.
He preached about the third pull. That's why he said. That is the burden of him about five years.
So he wanted to preach the third pull to the church.
The church. That is the burden in his heart.
God told the prophet, don't tell anything to the people. But God always telling, you don't say about the people about this.
But prophet tells everything to the church.
Because he says.
I love you more.
I love you more.
I tell everything to you.
I love you more.
Up to some days. Prophet said, don't say anything about that.
But prophet tells everything to us.
Not directly, indirectly. After the thing reaches its destination.
We don't need about that.
If he ordered biryani in Swigley.
You will very carefully bring it to our house.
It should not fell, fell down. Nobody should not catch that. He was very careful. After he delivered it to our house. He don't care about that. Because it reached its destiny, hallelujah. The secret of God reached its destiny, that is bride of Christ.
Before opening the seals, God fears about Satan. The church.
After opening seals, God didn't fear that because.
The church.
Because it reached its destination.
How many people read the message?
Here, Satan can do no harm to the bride of Christ.
When Satan, the man of God, can do no harm to the bride of Christ.
Hallelujah, praise God. Seven seals is the full word.
Seven seals is the full word.
I read, now notice. But at the opening of the seven seals.
Revelation ten.
The full word is to be borne into manifestation again.
The full word is to be borne into manifestation again.
When the seven seals opened, the full word.
The full word is to be borne into manifestation again.
Not part word.
Not part word.
Full word. In the seven churches diagram. In the seven churches diagram.
It has seven colors.
From red up to violet.
But this is not full color.
Not all the angels are in the all churches.
All the churches.
For Ephesus church.
All only.
For Simirna church.
Arainius only.
Martin Luther only for his churches.
Brannam only for his churches.
Seven colors of rainbow. God has seven colors. But Satan has only four colors.
Amen, praise Lord.
Red doors. White doors, yellow, black doors, pailors.
The four colors.
In the headstone.
It is white color.
Prophet says. White color contains seven colors. In white color, there are seven colors. In the white cloud, there is seven angels.
But each church has only one angel.
All the colors mixed mingled.
That means in church age, there is partial word given.
The full angels are here in this cloud.
That means full word comes in the seven churches. Do you believe that, hallelujah?
In Jigsaw Basil. We got the full picture, correct picture. In the seven churches, God broke that picture.
The church.
Gave it to every angel.
The church.
The denomination got that.
They fixed.
But wrongly they fixed.
In the big, the picture is.
In the top is sky. In the ground is pasture. One, one tree is standing. The cow is feeding under the tree, the grass.
But the denomination mixed it.
And they matched, matched the pieces.
The grasses went upside.
The sky is come down. The cow is feeding upon the tree.
It is wrong, wrong picture.
But. God broke his picture in his face into seven pieces.
When he matched the seven pieces.
The picture should come.
When the seven angels, seven pieces matched. The four colors.
The picture comes now, hallelujah.
The face of Jesus comes now.
The full word comes now. The bride comes now.
Jesus in the form of bride, hallelujah.
So the Old Testament Jehovah is the new testament Jesus. The new testament Jesus is the God which is in the bride of Christ. This is the revelation comes from the opening of the seven seals. God gave the message on the wings of the snow white dove.
May God bless you. Thank you, Katriam Laswadi Parag.
I want to sing a small chorus. The message. Morning message. What was the foundation? And follow in that, this message, hallelujah. This is the unity of brotherly love. Hallelujah. Which message preached pastor, Shinde. Combine with that, along with that message give. Hallelujah. What he has left is going to continue next session. Hallelujah. The message is continued. 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 The message is continued.